Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Eugene City Council meeting for March 11. You will note that there are, at present, only four of us here out of the nine. We expect Councilor Zelenka to come in on the phone, and we expect Councilor Clark, but we know that Councilor Evans and Councilor Taylor are out of town, and Councilor Brown is ill. So, that is the current makeup of -- so, what we can take action on or not take action on depends on how things go as we progress through our agenda. But we will start out, as we always do -- oh, I want to do one thing before we start because we didn't have the work session. So, we had a request from the Human Rights Commission. They were concerned because they sent a recommendation for the homeless commission to council, and we've not responded to that. And so, they wanted something for me to take back to them this week for their meeting. And I did speak briefly with the city manager about it this morning. John, have you thought any more about that?
Yeah, I thought you were -- we talked about your follow-up was a good way of going.
So, my response to that was that I -- we, I think, are very committed to continuing to work on homeless issues. I personally kind of feel like it's a tough thing for us when we're in the middle of a conversation about what we're going to be able to do in terms of our existing commissions budgetarily. And so, I would -- my thought was to say, "Don't think we're moving away from this. We're going to continue to work on the camping ban issue. We're going to continue to work on the Garfield site. We have inclusionary zoning you'll be talking about tonight, which helps with some of those issues. So, we're going to continue to work on them. But what we do about establishing a commission will probably depend somewhat on where we are with our budget, because I think that's kind of -- it needs to be taken into consideration in context of all the other commissions that we have at the same time. So, unless you disagree with me about that, that's kind of the message that I'll put out to them this week. Yeah?
My understanding, Madam Mayor, is that until we find out where we are financially, we need to basically stay the course on everything that we've got going. I know it's a real tough task to ask staff to continue working full speed on projects that may fall off the table because of budgetary concerns, but, you know, we have to, you know, hope for the best and plan for the worst.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, and I agree. And I think, my recollection of their recommendation, it was a good recommendation, and I think once we're clear about our budgetary situation, you know, it would be pretty swiftly that we could move forward on it if we were able to.
All right, so I'll pass that message on. All right, so now we're going to have the public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard. It must be Councilors Zelenka? Councilor Zelenka? Either that or the crowd has joined us.
Alan, is that you?
That's the recorder.
Hello?
Hello, there we go.
Yep, you're here.
Can you call back again? You'll have to redial. Shoot, you'll have to redial.
Sounds like he's okay with your proposal, Mayor.
Yeah, right. Winging right in there. Okay.
All right.
All right, so, start over again. I've got a lot of background noise. Great, we hear you, but you have a --
I'm going to mute you.
Okay. Good. There appears to be a lot of background noise. Oh. Can you hear us? That's better.
It's muted. Yeah, it's all muted, sorry.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Technology.
Public forum, which I think we were having, is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. The first up is David Gazara, followed by Philip Smith. David?
My name is David Gazara. I live in Ward Two, represented by Councilwoman Betty Taylor.
Talk right into the mic, David, please.
I am a member of the City of Eugene Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We citizen members advise the City of Eugene Transportation Planning Staff and Community Organizations. We provide feedback to city staff on projects with walking and biking components. Our BPAC meeting this Thursday will extensively examine the options of the South Willamette Street Improvement Plan and result in our recommending the options we feel will best serve our wonderful city of sophisticated and intelligent users of many transit options: walking, biking, driving cars, public transit, wheelchairs, scooters, skateboards, and trucking. We in BPAC are guided by these awarenesses. Bicycling and walking are legitimate transportation modes needing to be treated as equals in the transportation funding mix. Bicycling and walking improve the personal health of those engaged in it by increasing cardiovascular fitness. Bicycling and walking are natural partners to improving and increasing public transportation in our community, catalyzing compact urban growth and reducing pollution in the local environment. Bicycling and walking reduce wear and tear on street systems and allow the community to spend less on upkeep and development of city streets by reducing auto travel and the need for parking. Think of the impact spending less money would have on pavement preservation projects as you focused on the fiscal year 2014 to 2019 capital improvement program tonight and how you're going to pay for it. Bicycling and walking allow families greater financial freedom by reducing the financial burden of maintaining automobiles. Think of the impacts spending less money, having more transportation choices, having greater financial freedom. Think of the impact that these things have that you share with your constituents and you.
Thank you. Next up is Philip Smith, followed by Susan Stumpf.
This came tonight to briefly speak of -- I'll put it first forward as a concerned citizen, father, grandfather, children, children and grandchildren in this town, of the need for safe public places. We've come to the place in our evolution where we know that we don't need toxic chemicals, sprayed public places, wherever. For some reason, we're a very chemical-poison-happy country. I don't know what that's about essentially, other than the money thing, because what exists now is a pool of people that can deal with those issues in a non-chemical way. In other words, we're putting forth the IPM approach. We don't need those chemicals. They're not only poisoning us, they're poisoning entire environment. And I'm going to speak briefly as a beekeeper, and that's how I've made my living for ten years plus, as a business as such. You know, it's all over the news, you know, the crisis of the Pope and the Catholic thing. Yeah, it's a crisis for Catholics. I tell you what, the real crisis is the bees are going down really fast, like really fast. Unfortunately, it's not being put on the national news, but as a beekeeper, I'm very intimately connected to what's happening, talking to big commercial beekeepers. It's not in the news. You know, they always considered beekeeping as the ugly stepchild of agriculture until the recent past. And once the CCD hit, which is Colony Collapse Disorder, that came on the scene in 2006, all of a sudden, wow, bees are the backbone of the agriculture. They're the food supply. So, what's going on right now is there was a major crash in the bees this year, such that they didn't have the bees for pollination in California. Now, how I'm relating this to the cities is this is a particular chemical, systemic chemicals, the neoteniconoids. All of us serious beekeepers know that that's a very serious component of what's happening. The city is using these in addition to other chemicals. We don't know how much they're using them, whatever we need to know, so we can move our bees away from there. I'm trying to be a voice for the bees and pushing that issue forward.
Thank you. Next up is Susan Stumpf, followed by, it looks like Doug Hornaday.
Hi there. My name is Susan Stumpf. I am a citizen --
Talk right into the mic.
My name is Susan Stumpf. I'm a citizen of Eugene in Ward Two. And I'm talking tonight about bicycling and pedestrian advocacy for our city. I am a proponent of those. I'm also on the Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Committee with David Gazara and others. And I just wanted to put a public -- I mean, put a face on the committee and as just a user of our transit system. I drive, I take the bus, I walk, I ride my bike, primarily ride my bike. And I'm also a mother, and I have a 15-year-old daughter who rides four and a half miles to school. It's pretty great, and I want her to be safe. And so, I want to support the system to make sure that the streets are connected, well-connected, and reduce the speed on the streets so that we don't feel so vulnerable. So, I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doug Hornaday is next, followed by Ronnie Hawkins or Hawkers.
My name's Doug Hornaday, and I live in River Road.
And just lean into the mic again, sorry.
I've lived here for about 25 years. Love Eugene. I am a beekeeper here, and my concern is the chemical use in Eugene. I run a host-of-hive program where we create pesticide-free zones. We get whole neighborhoods to commit to a honeybee friend pledge that Lisa Arkin and I worked together to create, to have whole areas where bees would be safe. And our goal is someday to have these bees safe throughout the whole city so that we can ensure pollination. The single most important insect in the world is the honeybee. Without the bee, we're going to die. So, it doesn't make sense for us to poison the bees that are in our community. Where I live, they did a salmon restoration project within 200 yards of my hives, and they poisoned every year. Well, I lost two of the hives right after they poisoned. So, immediately, I have this negative reaction to pesticides and, you know, the city implementing the use of them, especially, I think, when the city has enough resources and people, I think, that would really come in to help dig. I mean, there's multiple options we could use to bring the people together to really find out if we can get people to go in first, dig these plants up that we don't want. And if they're not able to, well, then, you know, we're going to have to come up with another idea. But always to be aware of what the pesticides we're using are, how they're going to affect nature, and, you know, who's going to clean up the mess, because it's in our water, it's in our air, it's in everything now. The babies are being born with it. So, you know, you're going to be talking about pesticide use in the community. We need to come together, figure out how much is being used, what kind of chemicals are being used. Like Philip mentioned, neonicotinoids are just -- the documentation is there now. We need to stop using those immediately. You can put them in a tree, a bee goes to it, collects an opponent nectar, takes it to its hive, kills the hive. That's affecting all pollinators: butterflies, you know, insects, everything. So, it literally creates, makes the tree poisonous. So, you know, I'm sure down there at the Owen Rose Garden, a lot of those rose plants are poisonous to honeybees, but they sure smell good, and the bees go to them. Then they bring that pollen back to my house, and my bees die. So, it's really important that we really think about what we're doing and then come up with a plan. Like I say, minimize the amount of use, try to get the community to come together. And I think we can do this. I don't think it's too far-reaching. So, I'm proposing you guys really think about pesticide use. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Hawkins is next, followed by Lisa Arkin.
I am Ronnie Hawkins, Jr. of Eugene, and I am an urban translator of the United in Peace Organization that has recently moved here, and I am willing to help stop the violence and senseless crimes here in our city.
I'm sorry, but, you know, people aren't going to be able -- I apologize for interrupting you, but people aren't going to be able to hear you unless you talk right into them in --
Oh, okay.
Move it closer to you. Just make it work for you.
The whole thing moves.
Do I need to start over?
Yeah, I would if I were you. I'll give you a little extra time, but please, just take a breath. But I'm worried that people can't hear you. We've got people on the phone. It's a --
All right.
Just put your mouth right up again.
Right, and some --
Okay.
Closer.
I am Ronnie Hawkins, Jr. of Eugene, and I am an urban translator of United in Peace Organization that has recently moved here, and I am willing to help stop the violence and senseless crimes here in our city. I will be reaching out to others to come together to better our cities, states, towns, and communities. And I've handed the lady back there, it's where y'all can -- it's got the website address and all that on there, so, all right.
Thank you so much. Lisa Arkin is next, followed by, it looks like Gary Rondo.
Lisa Arkin, 1192 Lawrence Street, and I'm in Counselor Brown's Ward. And I'm speaking on behalf of Beyond Toxics tonight for the Friends of Healthy Bees campaign, and I'm so honored to be working with the beekeepers that are in our community, three of whom are here tonight. A lot of our members sign a pledge to be pesticide-free so that they can host a honeybee hive in their neighborhood. It's such a great program, and hundreds of our members have expressed their hope that our local government can do the same. In other words, to do all that you can do to protect honeybees. The best starting place for Eugene to do that is to have a strong and up-to-date integrated pest management system. That way, everybody's clear about the city's true commitment to a sustainable and healthy future for our community. So, we've already heard from two of our honeybee keepers about the problem with neonicotinoids and how there's ample evidence that's killing honeybee hives. And in fact, these pesticides are banned in Europe and some areas in Canada as well. So, without these bees, all of our local gardeners would be hard-pressed to grow their fruits and their vegetables. And as you know, the City of Eugene adopted a food security plan in 2010, and it talks about encouraging people to grow food in their own home gardens. So, we need honeybees to do that. The second excellent reason to be pesticide-free in our parks and pesticide reduction in other spaces is to protect our kids. Just two weeks ago, with two highly respected doctors, I was part of a pediatric grand rounds at Sacred Heart Medical Center, and we talked to pediatricians about the need to reduce pesticides. There's very strong support from our medical professionals. In fact, the Lane County Medical Society officially endorses a integrated pest management for local and state governments. It's on their website. Oregon Medical Association has also endorsed toxic reduction for kids. So, this is of concern to our medical professionals for the safety of our children who have critical windows of development, especially in the womb, where if a woman who's pregnant is exposed to some of these neurotoxins even before she realizes she is pregnant, it can create long-lasting harm for that child and permanent cognitive harm and lack of development. So, the city doesn't exactly know what it's doing in terms of pesticides on city property. I hope we can solve that one, get more information, and adopt an integrated pest management policy that's based on pesticide-free parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Rondo is next, followed by David Nelken.
My name is Gary Rondo. I live in the River Road area. I'd like to kind of follow up on what my beekeeper friends and Lisa have talked about about pesticides. I really think it's a great idea for the city to actually make a plan and use these things in a thoughtful way when they have to. Particularly, I would like to talk about the neonicotides that have recently been -- well, they're in the process of being banned in Europe right now. It went through quite a process there. The European Parliament issued a report recently. The European Food Safety Association did a big study over the summer, and it was a culmination of a bunch of these studies that ended up in them recommending that these three particular neonicotides not be used on flowering plants. And I think that would be a good thing for us to follow in Eugene. The worst one is amitoclopid that's used in many, many formulations. It's certainly a big deal for homeowners as well, but we can't do anything about that. You know, they -- that's just -- but the city could lead, you know, show how to do things without using these bad pesticides. These things are known to bioaccumulate. I don't think that was really appreciated when EPA first registered these chemicals, but at this point, it's becoming clear that very low sub-lethal levels accumulate in organisms and eventually kill them. And in fact, that's the mechanism that some of these pesticides use for killing termites and ants and things. They run at a very sub-lethal level, but over time, they wipe out the organisms because they become infected, they lose their immune systems. And that's what we're seeing in the bees, is the immune deficiency develops, and then the bees succumb to many other pathogens. And that's why it's been so hard to tease out the fact that it is these particular pesticides that are the problem. And it's still not 100% clear, but it's becoming -- it's a worldwide epidemic, and usually biological problems don't show up worldwide, but chemicals that are produced and distributed throughout the world, they do. So, that's the reason why we're concerned about them particularly.
David Nelken is next, followed by Carla Herbert.
Can you hear me? Yes. My name is David Nelken. I live in South Eugene. I would like to talk to you this evening about jobs and economic sustainability. Lately, Eugene has had good news about new jobs with the vet center, call center, brewery expansions, and other projects, all bringing a new round of economic improvement to our city. The flip side of new jobs and development is maintaining already existing positions. It is in this context that I would like to convey my thoughts on the proposed Willamette Street repaving. As you may know, the sidewalk width on almost all options is nine feet, with flat sidewalks with trees and poles realigned. The point of contention is thus whether to keep four lanes on Willamette Street or now are the traffic lanes to two in either direction. Any businessperson or marketing professional will tell you that first, you must have potential customers before you can convert them to actual clients. 16,500 potential customers drive up and down Willamette Street daily. If the traffic lanes are reduced from four to two, many potential customers will use other routes during their travels. If potential customers are reduced, then actual customer traffic will be reduced, resulting in possible loss of profit and thus reduction of employment on the street. If a property owner and -- property owners are renting commercial space on the street, then more potential and actual customer brings more profit for business and thus potentially higher rent, which results in possibly higher property valuation and higher property taxes, more revenue for the city. The envision Eugene scenario for Willamette Street has grand-scale buildings and apartments with reduced traffic, but with reduced traffic flow leading ultimately to stagnant property valuation, the process to reach the next level of development will be serious delayed. Let us not make the same mistake that downtown suffered 40 years ago. It is now just recovering from these decisions. I ask you to keep Willamette Street thriving, maintaining the current four-lane option. Thank you.
Carla Herbert is next.
Excuse me for reading. I know I'm not going to wing it. I'm better off reading.
Just talk right into the mic so everybody can hear you.
Okay.
It's not easy, evidently.
Dear City Councilmen and women, I am here tonight asking for your support for city pesticide-free parks, the use of safer alternatives instead of toxic pesticides and herbicides to fight weeds and pests on public property in our communities. As a cardiac and respiratory nurse and human health advocate, I am deeply concerned about the negative effects these chemicals have on the human body and our environment and the bees. There is good reason why most pesticides and herbicides have a label warning saying "warning" or "danger." A lot of these inert substances, which can comprise up to 99.9% of the pesticide product, does not mean they're inactive. Many of them threaten human and environmental health. These substances aren't required to be on the label, so research and data can't be collected. Many of these chemicals are banned in Europe and Canada. Medical research from Hood River County OHSU finds that pesticide exposure, even at low levels, have extremely potent effects. A number of research studies have demonstrated a link between chronic exposure of organophosphates and incidence of childhood asthma, cancer, which, brain, bone, leukemia, neurological problems, and developmental disabilities. We know chronic -- asthma is a chronic, potentially fatal inflammatory disease, the number-one health problem in children. According to the Journal of American Medical Association, asthma can be triggered by small irritated molecules of pesticides. Since the 1980s, asthma has doubled in the U.S. 7% of Americans have asthma. Here in the Valley, we have over 9%. Some people have mentioned exposure early in life, pregnancy or childhood, to certain pesticides can impact normal brain development and function, leading to cognitive deficits and learning disorders in later childhood. A recent study in California, women that live near farm fields sprayed with organochloride pesticides are more likely to give birth to children with autism, six times higher. And that's black and white data. Of the 27 most commonly used pesticides, 15 have been classified as carcinogenic by the EPA. Eight cause pregnancy problems, 15 damage genes. We've used over 1.2 billion pounds in the U.S. So, we ask that you protect our constituents against pesticides. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and thank all of you people who came to talk to us about integrated pest management and saving the bees. And you know we're going to have a conversation about this on Wednesday at our council meeting. And so I'll be very interested in hearing about the specific pesticides that were mentioned this evening, and I'm sure they have that information. So, and to my knowledge, we have an integrated pest management policy, but like every other policy, they need to be updated from time to time. So I'm guessing that's what we're really talking about. And I want to also thank the folks who are participating and continue to participate in the Willamette Street discussion. It is a journey. It is a journey to try to come up with a, a street that will accommodate all forms of transportation in a way that doesn't have a negative effect on those that already are there. So it's a big, it's a big lift, and I appreciate you all for being part of that. Thank you. Keep, keep talking with us about it. So, yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. And I second your comments, and I was going to ask specifically if Lisa Arkin from Beyond Toxic, might you send us maybe a little rundown of some of the pesticides that were mentioned in the testimony, since it's hard to type those names without knowing anything about them? That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Other comments? So what I'm going to do, so I think that, I don't know if I officially closed it, but it's closed now. So Counselor Clark said he would be on the phone. I'm going to pause the meeting for a couple minutes, see if we can get him here so we can do the business. So I don't know whether that requires us to make, to, he said he would call in, so why don't we take about three minutes and...
Is anyone on the phone?
This is Mike on the phone right now, if that's what you're at.
Oh, he's on the phone?
Mike is on, okay.
Never mind. Okay.
Did we lose Allen?
Is Allen on the phone?
Allen still there?
He muted himself.
Don't hear him. We still have a quorum, though. There's four of us.
I've been on the phone here. I've just had it on mute as not to interrupt the public forum.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Well, then I don't have to break this for anything, because we have enough people here. It's all good. All right.
And this is Allen. I'm still here on mute.
Thank you.
So we're going to do the consent calendar now, everybody. So Council President, will you make the motion for the consent calendar?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. And so I have one, two, three here, Counselors Zalinka and Counselor Clark.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's five in favor and none in opposition. It passes. We're on to item number three. This is a public hearing and possible action on an ordinance adopting hazardous substance user fees. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Eugene City Charter and City Code, the Eugene Toxics Right-to-Know Program must be fully funded by fees assessed to local manufacturing businesses that are hazardous substance users. To support the program for fiscal year 2014, the Toxics Board is recommending that City Council adopt a fee of $82.69 for full-time equivalent employed by participating businesses. Up to a maximum of $2,000 is provided by state law. This represents a per FTE increase of $3.69, or 4.5% in comparison to last year.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a completed request to speak form. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You'll have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have three people signed up. First is Ben Sappington, and followed by Lisa Arkin.
Good evening, Council. Ben Sappington, Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce, Ward 5, Counselor Clark. The Eugene Chamber has opposed the Eugene Toxics Program since inception, fighting hard for the legislative cap that maintains the $2,000 ceiling annually per reporting company. As the City Manager stated, the proposal before you today is to raise the charge by 4.5% to 82.69 per FTE, which companies then with 27 FTE or more would be paying the state maximum of $2,000 per company. The Chamber sent out an informal survey to all reporting and fee-paying companies within the Toxics Program. We have three highlights from that instrument. Overwhelmingly, companies do not support a fee increase of any kind, even if the end result is improved customer service and easier reporting. Number two, near-undivided support around reducing program expenses to the minimum level possible while still complying with the reporting portion of the Toxic Right-to-Know Charter Amendment. The third is increased fees in these economic times are crippling to over 500 small local manufacturing operations, which account for over 12,248 jobs in Eugene Springfield and near $143.5 million in quarterly payroll. The Chamber and our constituents are opposed to the fee increase that you are reviewing this evening. It's clear from our survey work that companies would like to see less expense from the Toxics Program rather than expanded service and outreach. We urge you strongly to consider the financial burden placed on our local manufacturing companies as you review this fee increase. Thank you.
Lisa Arkin is next, followed by Ken Luce.
Lisa Arkin, 1192 Lawrence Street. I'd like to speak.
Speak right.
I'd like to speak in support and in favor of the Eugene Toxics Right-to-Know Program. Oftentimes, my organization that I represent tonight, Beyond Toxics, has done a formal report to the City Council on the value of the program. I don't have a formal report tonight, however, I can tell you this. By having the Toxics Right-to-Know Program in our community, we are able to provide quite a service for, for the members of our community. And I'll give you one example. Beyond Toxics was the recipient two years in a row of an Environmental Protection Agency environmental justice small grant to look at childhood asthma in West Eugene. Our research shows that childhood asthma increases significantly pending proximity to an industrial source. Because of our data, the EPA has decided to do a special project here in Eugene, which will benefit the city. They are going to do what's called a soil kitchen. They're taking soil samples to share with the folks out in West Eugene who want to have a community garden. You may be aware that the city of Eugene has no community garden in West Eugene. The people there really want a community garden, and they would like to know that the soils are safe to garden in. And so the EPA is stepping up and will be in contact with the city soon to talk about that special program. A second benefit is that the city and Lane County recently received an EPA Brownsville Grant. If you read that grant application, about 25% of the wording comes directly from our report, that's Beyond Toxics' report to the EPA regarding air emissions, children's health, community concerns, the survey that we did in West Eugene, which showed that over 60% of the people in West Eugene are quite concerned about air quality and feel that it has an impact on their health. That survey was reported to the Environmental Protection Agency, and as one result, the city and the Lane County has received funds for a Brownsville Grant with special consideration for the citizens of West Eugene and the environmental justice communities there to make sure that we clean up our lands, our properties in West Eugene, and make them productive for both commercial, business, and residential uses. So these are just some of the many benefits that the Eugene Toxics Right-to-Know Program brings to our community. Our report will be published in the next two weeks, and I'll be eager to share it with the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And last up is Ken Luce.
My name is Ken Luce. I live in the Ferry Street Bridge area, and I've been involved in the Toxics Program since its promulgation in 1997. And a lot has changed since 1997. We didn't have terrorist activity when this law was promulgated. Now, we have all this Toxics Right-to-Know information accessible to the world. There's nothing in the Charter that says it needs to be accessible to the world so that terrorists can pinpoint where it is that they're going to place their next bomb. They can go right there on the net, and they can do it from anywhere they want, and they can say, oh, let's go to Forest Paint. They've got tons of whatever, MEK, ethyl, methyl. And the Charter Amendment did not specify that this needed to be on the Internet. It specified that it needed to be available for the citizens of Eugene. You can do that in a paper copy at the library, make it accessible to the city, all the city residents. They can show their library card. They can access that information. They don't have to have it on the net. You take it off the net, you reduce all the technical services involved with keeping that going. And the cost of doing that is something that's in the Toxics budget. So I would encourage you to send the budget back to the Toxics Board and say, let's review this, and let's see where else we can reduce the fees and reduce the burden to the employer. That's all I got. Thanks.
You. I'm going to close the hearing. I'm going to ask if there are any questions or comments from City Council. Chris? I mean, Counselor Pryor?
Thank you. I was looking through this material, and I guess the question I had is, I, I understand that the request for the increase in fees is to cover the cost to maintain the program. Is that, am I, am I correct in that?
I'll ask Fire Marshal to come on up and answer questions for us. Al Gerard.
Thank you.
Why don't you sit right over there? Great, thanks.
Good evening.
Counselor. Did you restate your question, please?
Sure. From the material I've read here, it looks like the increase that you're requesting is so that you can maintain the program in its current configuration?
The configuration is changing on a daily basis. Our program manager, Joanne Epley, is trying to make improvements on streamlining the process, so it's easier for business and easier for us to maintain that database. So it's evolving. The next project that we have in place is to replace our old database, which is very labor-intensive in maintenance, and getting it so that it's a lot more current and more user-friendly.
I understand, which I think is a great thing to be doing. The only question I have is, we have ongoing conversations about the budget and whether or not we can afford to do all the things we'd like to be able to do with our budget. We're looking at, at closing things down and shutting things down. And so while I appreciate the desire to make improvements, as we've heard, some of those improvements may not benefit the folks who the improvements were intended to benefit. And so that's what I'm trying to weigh. I think you're, I think your thinking is great, and to try to improve the service you deliver is a very, very worthwhile thing to do. I'm only approaching it from strictly a budget standpoint. And in the given economic climate, is it the wisest thing for us to do in an effort to try to improve service to also increase the fee? What I was trying to get at, will this compromise our ability to collect or report the information that's required by the Charter? Will this affect that piece of it?
This particular project is actually going to help us make it less labor-intensive for our staff to do. Our goal is to take it from a program manager who is a management analyst down to a more administrative level, so we could hopefully save some money in the annual salary, get it just to a bare maintenance program so that we don't spend upwards of $100,000 on the program a year.
Okay. What I was trying to get at is, I, I can see doing this if it will better fulfill our Charter requirement. If our Charter requirement can be satisfied at the existing level, then I would, then I would say, is this, is, do we need to spend this additional money if it will still satisfy our Charter requirement? What I'm hearing you say is, we may be able to satisfy our Charter requirement, but this will allow it to proceed in a much more effective or a better way? Is that what you're saying?
Well, essentially, what it is, is we're trying to reduce the budget by making it more efficient, so that we don't have to use a program manager of that high level of training to maintain it. Get it down to someone who is at more of a technician level, save some money on the budget, is what we're looking to try to do.
Would that be something that would occur in later years?
Yes.
Okay. So it might cost a little more this year, but your intention is to maybe reconfigure it this year with a higher cost in order to reduce it later?
It's not really a higher cost. It's maintaining the current level of service that we're, we're doing, and it's cost of living adjustment, basically, for her salary and for, I can't remember the other part to it, but essentially, to cover the cost of that particular person doing the program at 90%.
Maybe I can help out also.
Yeah. Thank you.
Part of what, what this does really is maintain what we currently have. And so the program manager right now spends an X amount of an FTE doing this particular work. And what this does is maintains that amount of FTE still doing this amount of work. And because the cost of that FTE just goes up over time, what this is doing is covering that increase over the last couple of years to maintain the same amount of FTE. I think the Fire Marshal is also talking about, which we want to continue to encourage, is, is are there ways, as we continue to think about into the future, to administer this program like other programs, that we can actually reduce the cost and still maintain the service at the same or better? Part of that is, is it could, in the future, we're trying to have a different classification of employee, which is a potential savings there in some of those things. But what this is, is a toxic, the board has said, we still believe we need the same percentage of an employee doing the work in order to get the same product that we've been getting. So it's to maintain what we currently have.
Okay. That's really helpful, because it was, I can see that was kind of two conversations going on at the same time. But you would hope in the future, by moving to this new system, that it would either not need to increase anymore, or you could perhaps even reduce the cost by creating these greater efficiencies.
That's what our hope is.
That's correct. And part of what I, and I'm not going to speak for Ben or the Chamber and all, but I think one of their concerns may be is that current program itself maybe is more than what's required. But this proposal is to maintain what we currently have, which is a kind of a different conversation than is it more or less.
Yeah. Okay. I can, what I could do then with, with this clarification, I could support this with the expectation that by doing this, you would be able to hopefully get to a place where you could then begin to get to a much more efficient system, so that the price doesn't just keep going up. I mean, this is, this can become a very expensive program, and I, I do not want to compromise the reporting capability. That's not what this is about at all. It's escalating costs for the same thing, and you're struggling to create efficiencies. I get that. So I can support it this time, but I will be looking to see how we can take advantage of those efficiencies as they go. So thank you.
Counselor Soret.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm just wondering what would be the impact if we did not approve this fee increase?
Well, the impact would be that we're not fulfilling the Charter requirements. The Charter requirements say that we should, we are supposed to support this program with fees. So if we're not going to support the program with the fees, then we'd have to, I don't know, we'd have to have, come up with a different way of funding the program.
Maybe I can also expound on that, too.
Yes.
Unfortunately, Al's kind of putting in this weird place.
Sorry about that.
Unfortunately, Joanne Epley couldn't be here with a, she had a family emergency. And so part of it is, is the, the current fee, if you, if you don't increase the fee, we'll spend less time, less of an FTE doing the work, and so there'll be less reporting than actually is done now. And so this really is about, do we maintain the current reporting that we're doing now? If the answer is yes, then in order to have that amount of FTE... If the answer is yes, then in order to have that amount of FTE, we need the fee increase. If it's, we don't want to do as much reporting, then if you don't approve it, then we'll just do less reporting because there'll be less FTE ability to support it, which the Charter says you have to support the program.
But then we'd want to be assured in some way that the reporting we did do was in compliance with what's required.
Correct. So that's, yes, that's still important.
So I'm going to ask Counselors Zelenka and Counselor Clark if either one of them have any questions about this or comments?
No.
Nope. So the issue at, did no? Is that a no?
I heard one no.
Counselor Clark said no, I didn't. I'm assuming we would have heard.
Well.
This is Alan.
Yes.
My only comment is, I think we need to be as efficient as possible while maintaining the program and meeting the requirement that was before by the voter. So we need to make sure that we're doing the program, but we need, as Counselor Pryor was saying, we need to make sure that the program is as efficient as possible. I think what staff said was, helps ease my mind that that's where we're going with this program.
Thank you, Counselor Zelenka. Counselor Polling?
Well, I understand the difficulties that you're facing with the program. However, you know, citywide, we've been asked to make cuts in all the departments. And, you know, the staff has responded remarkably to that. And now we're going out and asking for the public's help to fund some services that we're talking about cutting. And also, I tend to agree with what Counselor Pryor first started saying about, you know, putting the cost of this on the, basically the small businesses, and it's costing them money. And I don't think that this is the right time to be going out and asking for more money from people that we're going to be asking for a lot of money from down the road. I think that, you know, it's just not the right time to do this, and I can't support raising the fees at this time.
So the question at hand is, does any Counselor object to taking action tonight? You don't object. You don't object. You do?
I would, excuse me for my coughing fit. That's not much I can do about it. I guess, I don't know if this came before Counsel at a work session in the past, before I came on Counsel. I just feel like there's some background information that I don't have that's challenging me and making a decision.
So you'd like to deal with it in a work session? Yeah.
I would agree. I think there's a thin enough attendance here, I would be nervous.
Okay. So we'll do that.
Yeah, we can bring it back in a work session, or we can provide more information to some specific questions.
Question, though, is whether they're ready to vote on it tonight, and apparently not.
Right. But that's, and we can bring back some additional information ahead of a vote later.
And in particular, in the, in our materials was referenced to attempts to deal with the discrepancy or some of the parity issues in terms of how this impacts businesses at different levels. And I'd love a little more context for that conversation and what was attempted in the past.
Okay, we'll just keep coughing our way forward here.
Coughing clowns up here.
Okay, we've got one more thing to do here, guys.
Thank you for our.
Is there a way to mute Counselor?
Four and five. Yep.
Alan's trying to speak.
Alan, I mean, Counselor Zelenka?
No, I was, is there a mute button for the coughing?
No. Open your mouth and hold the button and all that at the same time.
All right. Action number four is a capital improvement program. Counsel President, do you want to put a motion on the table?
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2014-2019 capital improvement program as recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion? Anybody ready to vote? Apparently, you're all ready to vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. We've got one, two, three here. Counselor Clark, Counselor Zelenka?
Aye.
Say it again.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
So five in favor and none in opposition, it passes. All right. Hacking on.
Hacking on.
We go to item number five, which is the ratification of the Intergovernmental Relations Committee actions. Lisa Gardner?
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors, and those of you on the phone. First of all, I want to mention that we have a typo on page two of the March 6 IGR minutes.
Another one?
Yes. It's relating to Senate Bill 468. It was a Priority One support was the action that the IGR took, which was consistent with the Mirror bill, which was House Bill 2702 on the alcohol impact area. So it was recorded as a Priority One opposed, it was a Priority One support.
So noted.
Okay, so moving on. There were a total of 12 bills that went to the IGR Committee on February 27 and March 6. Seven bills received unanimous votes by the IGR Committee. Five bills have been referred to you for your consideration this evening in action. Following your action on the seven bills, you'll be asked to pass a motion ratifying those minutes from the 27th and March 6 with the addition to the motion, including the correction to the March 6 minutes to show Priority One support for Senate Bill 468. So the first, the first two bills in front of you are SJR 10 and 11, and those were both part of the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities for 2013 that were approved by the IGR Committee July of 2012 and ratified by the Council at the September 10 meeting. So the Council actually took action to support all five of the LOC's priorities. These bills reflect moving two of those priorities forward into legislation. There are two very good fact sheets in your packet that talk about the position on that, but I'll give you a quick summary. SJR 10 proposes constitutional referral that would allow local voters the ability to consider a temporary tax outside of compression. And that's an issue that's very real in many cities across the state of Oregon, has been less of an issue to date here in Eugene. But just to give you an example illustrating it, if a local option levy were passed by the voters of Eugene to implement something for public safety or name any issue, if there's compression, there's not enough room, then we actually can't implement something that was a desired service passed by a majority of the people in Eugene. So we can handle these separately, or we can, the IGR handle these together? Do you like to split them apart?
Separate.
I think that'd be better.
Okay. So to you for conversation or questions.
You want to take one at a time here?
Yes. So on the SJR 10, let's see, see if I can find that again. It was a Priority One support?
Yes.
I move that the Eugene City Council adopt a Priority One support on SJR 10.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
My vote is not necessarily whether I'm in favor of it or not, but the fact that this, if the, if it goes through the process, it goes to the voters of the state for final approval. And that's the reason why I am supporting moving forward on it. Agreed.
Okay, apparently, we're ready to vote on this one? All right. All those in favor, please indicate. Three here. Counselor Zelenka, Counselor Clark?
Aye. I am a no vote.
So there's four to one. It passes. All right.
Okay. Are you hearing an echo, or is it just me?
No.
Okay, great.
Echoes, there's coughs.
What? What?
SJR 11, moving forward, is also constitutional referral. It would reset a property's taxable value to its real market value at the time of sale or construction. It does not raise taxes on anyone's current home. It does restore equity by recalibrating taxes based on the market's valuation of a property at the time of sale.
Just a chat, Lisa, just a chat.
Do what? Oh, see, everyone else, you're telling me to get closer. I'm overcompensating.
You're like me.
I have no problem projecting my voice. How's this?
Better.
Better for me, too. Great. So it's a, it's a better measure of a property's value and an owner's ability to pay by having that recalibration. I do want to note that the staff recommendation on this bill was Priority One support. There were two actions taken at the meeting. There was a two to one no on supporting it, and then there was a motion made by Counselor Polling to oppose it that got a two to one. So neither bill passed, neither recommendation passed. The original recommendation from staff, consistent with the action by Counsel last year, is Priority One support.
Okay. Counselor Polling?
I'm trying to remember if, I'm trying to remember, yeah, why?
Well, the discussion at the time had to do with just concern about raising taxes, and that was a conversation. So I think, I think in some part, you did it for the sake of the conversation that was largely carried, I believe, by Counselor Clark.
Of course, she didn't oppose it.
It was evident that it was coming to the full Council at that point.
So the current, the current staff position is Priority One support?
Yes.
Okay. I move that Eugene Council, Eugene City Council move forward with a Priority One support on SJR 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three here.
This is Alan. Aye.
Four.
Mike, I am a no.
Four to one, it passes. Thank you. Okay, next up?
Okay, moving up, moving on, excuse me, to House Bill 2890, which is the last of the three bills, I believe, considered on the 27th. This bill is also known as an Inclusionary Housing bill, might be something that's familiar to you because the Council has entertained this concept before. It eliminates a prohibition preventing local governments from adopting requirements addressing housing affordability, such as inclusionary zoning. It enables cities to make local decisions whether to pursue measures addressing housing affordability, does not require us to put them in place. So it's a local control issue.
So my comment on this is, this is something we have historically supported and wanted to have available in our community. We've gone back to legislature session after session in support of this. And so, I think, I support it very strongly and hope that you will, too. Okay. So all those, oh, you got to put it on the motion. Put a motion out there first.
I move that the Eugene City Council move forward with a Priority One support on House Bill 2890.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Everybody ready? Anybody down there have anything to say? All right, we're going to vote on it then. All those in favor, please indicate. Three here. How about you two?
Zelenka, yep. And in a surprising note, Mike votes no.
Four to one, it passes. Thank you, because I'm going to go testify on it this, next week.
Okay, so moving forward then to the bills considered at the March 6 IGR meeting, we have, I'm going to do these together, just because we did them together, they're related bills on studded tires, 2278, 2397. There was a third bill that we decided not to bring to Counsel's recommendation, we didn't think it had a chance of passing, it required a permit, it was much more cumbersome. These are the two that appear to have more chance of passing or having any movement. 2278 is the only one of the bills that deals with, that does have the, that has the greatest chance of moving forward. It imposes a fee on the sale of studded tires with the revenue going to the state highway fund. It was recommended for a Priority Two support by staff. The second bill, 2397, imposes a fee on the sale of studded tires with 20% going to cities to pay for damages caused by tires. And so, there's a percentage where 5% goes to the, those who are selling the tires, I'm not sure how else to put that, tire dealers, and then 20% net split, I don't know exactly how, that goes to the Highway Trust Fund and gets allocated to the cities.
So would you, would staff rather we move on these individually?
It's probably cleaner that way.
Okay. All right. On, before I put any motion out, I would just like to say, both of these address an issue that has been a long time coming in this state. You know, the studded tires do progressively more damage than the ordinary tires, and this is something that people choose to, they make a decision to buy studded tires. Now, there are other ways and other means to travel. I've lived in this state over 35 years now and have never owned studded tires. The only time I had studded tires on a vehicle is one time I had to drive one of the patrol cars to the sheriff's office, and it absolutely scared me to death because there was no ice. It was rainy and, you know, wet pavement, and it's actually, to me, it just didn't make sense to put studded tires on the vehicles. So I see a direct connection between the studded tires and the damage caused and the fee collected helping to pay for this damage. So I'm supportive of both of these measures moving forward. So with that, I move that Eugene City Council move forward with a Priority Two support on House Bill 2278.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Counselor Zelenka?
On both of these bills, does the money from the fees go directly to repair roads?
No. The money on the first goes to the state, they both go state highway fund. The second one calls out that they go to locals to repair roads. So there's a distinction.
Did you hear that, Counselor Zelenka?
Well, a bit of echo, she would back up a little bit, I probably could hear better.
Can you hear me now?
The first one goes to the Highway Trust Fund, is that what I was hearing?
They both go to the Highway Trust Fund. The first one specifies, does not specify is directly the connection that the money get reallocated to local jurisdictions to pay for damages to roads. But as part of the Highway Trust Fund, we do get an allocation of funding.
Yeah, which we could use for that.
But you could certainly, you could certainly give, Lisa, direction from Counsel that whichever bill moves forward, you want the money to come to the local jurisdiction for.
They both do that anyway.
That happens anyway. That happens.
Oh, we just lost somebody.
All right. Uh-oh, well, then we can't.
This is, this is Alan, I'm still here.
Are you both there?
This is Alan, I'm still here.
Alan, if I'm not echoing too greatly, I would like to say that the funds are distributed with the city receiving a share, just to clarify. So we do get a share, but it's not specifically designated to cities for road repair.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we ready to vote on this one? All right. If we're voting on one or two, I forgot.
2278.
2278.
2278. All those in favor, please indicate. Three here.
I'm a no vote, this is Mike.
Mike, a no.
This is Alan, I'm a yes.
A four to one, it passes. Next one?
So that actually concludes the.
No, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, my apologies.
I move that the Eugene City Council.
2397.
I move that the Eugene City Council move forward with a Priority One support on House Bill 2397.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ready to vote, everybody? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three here.
Mike, no. This is Alan, I vote yes.
Four to one, it passes.
Okay, so that concludes the five bills that we did not receive unanimous action from IGR.
Okay.
There was another bill that you referenced in an email to the full Council that is of some importance, I think it's worth just bringing up, and that is House Bill 2926, which would, and this passed unanimously as a Priority One support, sorry, Priority One opposed by the IGR. Basically, it would designate that the share of the contribution in lieu of taxes, money that we get from EWEB that is outside the city but within the county, go to the county. So it's one of the bills that, based on the IGR action, we have already moved forward with active lobbying against.
Any questions?
Yeah, before we take action on this, I would just like.
You don't have to, you are, I mean, we do the whole thing.
Okay. I would just like to say that, you know, the way this was presented to the IGR left me a little bit after the meeting was over, I was a little concerned. My understanding is that this was actually, a conversation about this bill started in December, and the IGR Committee did not get the information until, I think it came out at nine o'clock on Tuesday evening. And the questions that we had, there were a lot of what I would categorize or describe as, "I don't know answers." And when we're talking about something that impacts not only us, but our fellow counterparts at the county and EWEB, with something of this magnitude, it would be my hope in the future that we have an open discussion, if it be a joint elected officials meeting or a work session with each individual board, but I'm just not satisfied with the way this whole thing happened. And I'm not really sure who started it or where it came from. I've heard two different versions. I've heard one was that it was as a result of a conversation with the county administrator. I've heard one was that it was as a result of a conversation with the county administrator and Mr. Gray from EWEB. I've also heard that it was a conversation with one of the EWEB board members and somebody from the county, and it just kept moving forward. I'm not, I'm not faulting just our folks, I'm faulting EWEB's folks and the county's folks for not actually bringing it to everybody's attention at the very onset. We could have had this discussion sometime in January and come up with, you know, a real clear explanation on where this, you know, what happens to this. And, you know, even a little bit of a history of the silt money, is this required by law that they pay it back to us? How much are they required by, by law? You know, how much would go to the county? Would they be getting the full amount or half of it or what? So like I said, I'm just not happy with the way this whole thing has been handled, and I hope in the future, especially when we're dealing with our neighbors, that we have a little bit more open conversation at the very start of the whole process.
So if I could, I just want to clarify EWEB's position on this bill. So this is a bill that the county initiated and had Representative Holvey introduce on their behalf. EWEB has not, EWEB was not part of this bill developing. They provided background information as it was requested by the county on how calculating silt payments occurs and different things like that, so they provided some information to them. They've been really clear with the county that this is an intergovernmental issue that's better addressed locally than through state legislation that implicates one utility, because it only implicates one utility in the state. It's targeting, EWEB is targeting the city of Eugene. They've also said that any action agreed to should minimize additional administrative burden to EWEB in calculating and distributing the payments, that EWEB customers should be held harmless in terms of additional rate burden resulting from any changes. They reviewed the bill. Their intention was to stay neutral to the extent that rate payers were held harmless. I think they, and I believe, and I don't want to speak for the city manager here, but this is the kind of issue that I think we would have loved to have had a conversation with the county. But formally, we received this when the bill dropped. Until then, it's a concept, and there's lots of concepts floating. I don't disagree with you that it really merits a very robust conversation. So I just want to provide you with that background, that EWEB's not supporting this bill. If it were to move forward, they would support an amendment, they would oppose any increase to rate payers.
And I'll just piggyback on that. I would agree with you, Council Polling, that the way it rolled out was not ideal from anybody's perspective, from our perspective.
Is Mayor trying to get in the queue?
Yes.
And I, I think it's good that the IGR unanimously said, we don't support this, and the priority one opposed. From my perspective, this is a bad bill on many levels, and, but as Lisa mentioned, you know, as concepts get talked about, there's a whole lot of those kinds of things that occur, and then what happens in this case is it gets dropped on us, and so now we have to react and respond to that. We would very much enjoy of having, to have had a broader conversation leading into this discussion, but it didn't happen, and so I agree with you 100%.
Well, I'm, I'm still, 52 seconds left.
Yes.
I'm still inclined to, I'm not going to change my vote, but, you know, one of the reasons I voted the way I did at the IGR committee meeting is, my wife and I, when we were raising our daughter, when she'd come to us with a question or a request, if we didn't have enough information, we automatically said no and, you know, come back with some more information. And, you know, I tend to wait until I get all the information before I make a decision. But if you're asking for an answer now, based on what you're telling me, this is, you know, you're going to end up with a no, or this is the answer you're going to get. So that's kind of the way I approach this, you know, based on what I heard at the meeting, and because, like I said, we didn't get that until nine o'clock the night before. I had to base my decision on, on the limited information and the, as I said, I categorized them as I-don't-know answers, it just didn't feel good.
Council Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of those bills where, like George said, based on not having enough information, I voted a particular way during IGR, and have since gotten a great deal more information from our friends at the county and from some EWEB board members. So I'm going to support this, and I hope other councillors will as well. The reason is that right now, the city collects EWEB's silt money from those rate payers who are not city residents, and there's a good chunk of them, and it's not equitable and it's not right. And right, this bill would, in my mind, by right, take those monies that would, that are paid by non-city residents and pay them to the county. It could be, based on their calculations, an excess of half a million dollars a year, and that money would be general fund money to the county, the great majority of which is spent on public safety and on our jail, which is currently in kind of a crisis right now. So my understanding is that the equitable distribution of county residents' fees would go to the county, in which case we'd be strengthening the jail and strengthening public safety in the process. And I, I think there's also the possibility that this bill could allow for other utilities who have Eugene residents paying those fees to be paying us silt money where they currently do not, like Main Electric and others. So I'd be in support of this bill based on the new information that I've learned.
To me, there is no new information because the information we have is that EWEB is a subset of the city of Eugene, and it is our rate payers and our city that has paid for the infrastructure and all of the things that provide that service. So for us, it's a very big investment, and this is what we get, the agreement that was made between EWEB and the city back in 1970-whatever that said, that's how we're going to handle this, that the city and EWEB agree to, this is their process for the investment that the people of this community have made. So that is my, my take on, on that as a public responsibility. What I would like to say is we're very aware of the county's economic issues as well as our own, and our hope would be that we would look for ways to build the pie instead of cutting each other's pieces up. So that's, that is the way that we would like, I would prefer us to be approaching this. So anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, this is Alan, can I get in the queue?
Yes, you are. You're queued.
Oh, so I have a question about how this bill, how we learned about this bill. I'm not on the IGR, but it sounds like that we learned about this when, after it was dropped?
We knew it was coming for, I don't know, John, we first heard about it. We knew that it was, the county was looking into it, and then it got a sponsor in Representative Holvey, and then it moved forward. So that we learned in the last, you know, month or so, and then it got dropped in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, and this is solely directed at EWEB and the city of Eugene, correct?
Exactly. And that's part of what makes it, makes it an awkward bill.
Right, it's very limited and narrow in its, in its purpose. I agree with the mayor that this is a longstanding issue about the silt. The EWEB is a city utility, not a county utility. The silt's purpose isn't to reallocate tax monies. It's, and then secondarily, the, if this were about $500,000, that would necessarily mean we would have a $500,000 general fund deficit after this was passed? Is that correct?
That's correct, and I've heard estimates that would put it upwards of $750,000.
Say that again, please.
I have heard estimates that would put it closer to $750,000. That would be a general fund deficit.
Right, thank you. That makes it worse. Okay, I don't support this bill at all, thank you.
Just to clarify, you just need to ratify the actions of the IGR.
We don't have to take any action because we took action in IGR.
Unless Mike wants to pull it.
Unless Mike wants to pull it. Unless Council Clark wants to pull it.
I would, but I recognize the votes at the table well enough to know that I don't need to make a point of the one I've already made. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, all right.
I move to ratify the IGR committee's unanimous actions on bills at the February 27 and March